This is the Alachua County Commission. This is an emergency meeting on March the 24th at 5:00 PM. And we have five commissioners and a manager and a couple of attorneys online. The clerk is in the main auditorium taking minutes. And this meeting is being recorded and streamed and broadcast. And the way this meeting is going to work is each one of the commissioners is going to have a couple of minutes to say anything that's on their mind with respect to the current emergency we're in. And then we're going to look through Emergency Order 2020-09, the one that is the Stay-at-Home and Close All Non-Essential Businesses. And we're going to go through this in as much detail as folks want. We can't make motions in this format because we can't take public input in any meaningful way. So what we're going to do is let each one of the commissioners suggest the changes that they believe we need to make. We're also going to hear from the manager and the attorney who have been compiling questions and particularly the ambiguities that a quickly produced order like this is bound to have. So with that, what I'll do is I'll just start on my screen and ask Commissioner Byerly if there's anything generally that he wants to say before we get into the document. And somebody's going to have to unmute Commissioner Byerly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it?
Yeah.
And is there any audio lag, like or lag problems like you had before? Am I coming through okay?
No, you'll be fine. We can hear you fine. Your video lags a little bit.
Okay. Generally, no. I have a list of specifics, so.
Okay. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I do have some concerns. I have gotten several calls, especially from some pastors in their churches with the, I guess, this new emergency order. In terms of, they were told that if they had 50 or less individuals, that they could have service. But now it's, it seems from this order, it has to be 10 people. And they raised some concerns about that. And what they have actually told, some of the pastors I talked with said that what they have told their members, if they're feeling sick or anything, please do not come to church. Use common sense. And so they're kind of weary because they said if it's 10 people or less, then there's no need to have a church service. And so those were some of the comments that said to me. And then I also went by Publix and some people came by the funeral home today. I've been here all day and told me that the lines are on the Publix on Main Street here. The lines are long and it's been that way since 8:00 this morning. And the police are out there and that, and it's hot. And they're just saying it's, it's kind of hard on folks to do that. And so that, that one customer per thousand square foot is, is an issue, I think, is becoming an issue. And then, and I'm also thinking about the first of the month when those, those individuals get their social security or their, you know, their checks or whatever, the cash and all of those issues. But, and then it's based upon the square footage of the actual shopping center or Publix. That means that if it's 55,000 square feet or something like that, that's what, about 45 people, maybe close to 50 people or whatever. I just don't know if that's working or not. I just think that something should be considered with that. I don't know, is that a guideline of the CDC or what in reference to that? One customer per thousand square feet. So, I mean, if there's some thing, I think that right now, we just, it's getting hard. People are getting frustrated and those are the things I've been hearing today, so.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Cornell.
Are we getting into stuff like that?
I just want to hear statements from each one of the commissioners first. Commissioner Cornell.
Okay.
You're on.
Okay, I've been unmuted. So first of all, Hutch, I want to thank you and the staff for, for taking the step of doing this order. I do have a couple of general comments. As some of you may or may not know, I've been tracking the cases per thousand, which is the, the positive cases per capita on the state site. And we are at the, at the top, if not the top, on cases per capita for the 67 counties. And, and as a result, I'm very supportive of this approach and this order. And I want you all commissioners to hear that. I've also done kind of some math on if we continue to double at the, at the current rate. And my math shows that we've been running at about doubling every two and a half days, which in the next 20 days, if that rate continues, would put us in the thousands and thousands. I think the number I got was over 8,000 cases, which is why we are having to do something right now. If we slow that rate just to doubling every four days instead of every two and a half days, my math gets us to positive cases in 20 days of still at about 1,000. But 1,000 is significantly less than multiple thousands. So Hutch, I want to thank you because I think that's the key slowing the curve. And as I talk to the folks in the community, they are all very, very much on board. The comment that I think resonated most with me was the last two weekends of bars and gatherings were to Alachua County what the spring break beaches were for Broward and Miami-Dade. And Broward, Miami-Dade, and Alachua County have the highest cases per capita. And so I'm, I'm very supportive of, of this order. I have a number of comments and I'll get into those in details. But I will say lastly, just in general, that over the last 24 hours, I have spoken to not less than 20 to 25 business owners, folks that are the heart and soul of our community. And I will tell you all that most of them have actually taken very aggressive guidelines with their own employees, who are their most important asset, far before we even did this order yesterday, which made me feel good. You know, they are practicing, folks working from home, they are practicing folks distancing six feet, not just within their companies, but for those that have businesses where they work outside. They are taking many, many steps. And it's because of the community that I feel really good about maybe some of the changes that I've recommended. But I'll get into the specifics when we go through the document. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And then Commissioner Wheeler. And, hang on, we're going to unmute you here.
I'll have to do that there. Now, I have to, to agree with what Ken has just said in terms of the people that I've been talking to. Everybody is, is feeling pretty positive even though they do would, would like to see this tweaked. And so I, I have some suggestions that have been, that I've collected from emails that I've gotten and also phone calls that, that I've had. So I'll share them as we go through the document.
All right. And then I'll go to County Manager Lieberman, if you'll unmute her, and just any opening comments that you want to make. Michelle?
Yes, I have a whole list. Well, I have some stacks here. I've gotten all the emails together on, that we have received, which includes comments from the Sheriff's Office. I've got comments from the City of Hawthorne, from the City of Gainesville, and the City of Newberry, as well as from a few different industries.
Okay. And then Sylvia, do you want to provide us any input or guidance at this point? If somebody unmutes Sylvia? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, we're going to have some suggestions. They're not, some of them are a little bit substantive, but most of them are just errata suggestions for some of the language to make it a bit more clear. I think as people have tried to read the order, they've, they've had some confusion about some of the language and we would like a chance to get to that. But I'd rather get to the substance first before we do some cleanup on that language.
All right. And Bob Swain is also on. He's the attorney who's been doing the lion's share of the drafting work on this. So he's going to be taking notes. Is there anything, Bob, that you need to tell us about at this point? Go ahead. Okay, great.
Not at the point. I'm just going to be listening to figure out where to go from here.
Right. And so let me just explain for those who need to know how we got to where we are with the document. Michelle and I met over the weekend or whenever it was. And we looked at a number of orders that had been done by other states and by Broward County. So we looked at New York and Ohio and then the Broward County order. And we, of them, we liked the, the form of Broward County order and we thought that covered most of the bases. But after we worked on it for a while, I'd sent it to some folks over at the City of Gainesville. And primarily the mayor said the Illinois state model is a much better way of branding this as stay-at-home because the Broward County, if you read it, most of our non-essential or essential businesses are, come from that. But it turns out that the, the front end of the Illinois model was much better. The wording was better. It was, so anyway, we cobbled together the front half of Illinois, the back half of the Broward County. And then we had to sort of make those work together. And then there was input from a number of other folks. The City of Gainesville weighed in. And then when I was sitting around with the attorneys and the manager, we did a straight face test with the list of industries, essential, not essential. And so some of the things that made it into the Broward order did not make it into my list of essentials. And that's some of the things that we've been getting calls about. And in some cases, I may have changed my mind having heard from folks. But what I'm going to do, since I've pretty much had my shot at this document, is listen to the four commissioners and then the manager as we, as we go through these things. And we can do them page by page or we can just pick major subject areas. How would you all like to proceed? And if you can unmute all of the commissioners, I think we can, we can manage unless somebody gets too wordy. So would you like to go page by page and just comment on things? Or would you like to do it by subject matter? Like grocery stores or like car lots or?
I have a relatively short list. And, can you hear me?
Yeah.
First, let me say too, with very few exceptions, all the feedback I've gotten has been good. It's been positive. It's been constructive. And a lot of people cussing this out, and then one or two. But most of it has been good suggestions. And I think we're all kind of reacting to the response and feedback that we've gotten from people in the community. I think we're probably all more or less on the same page in terms of what issues we need to discuss here specifically. I have a relatively short list. I'll just, without going into detail, these are the things I want to talk about. The occupancy restriction, like a couple of you already expressed reservations about that. And I'm leaning pretty strongly against changing that as well. I'm afraid that we're creating a handful of new issues and attempting to deal with the original issue. We can get into that in more detail, I guess. The issue of open construction sites, I definitely support the idea of keeping open construction sites running. We can have a discussion because our minds not yet made up about whether or not to allow new sites. That's another one that a lot of people, particularly in the last few hours, have raised with us. Pawn shops, I support making them essential businesses because, as some people have pointed out to us, it is, like it or not, a sort of financial system for folks who are poor. And they may, may need to, you know, access what for them is a line of credit in times when they may need that in the coming months. And I think we ought to include that as a financial institution. Commissioner Cornell emailed something to the manager and copied us all. Of course, none of us responded because it would have been a sunshine issue. But I essentially agree with everything on this list, except that I could be talked out of used car lots as being an essential business. But that's what we want to talk about now. That's my list.
Chuck, you mentioned the, the grocery store lines and the churches. Did you have anything else specifically that you wanted to bring up about this document? Hang on, we need to unmute you. I don't think I have control over that, so I'm sorry.
Okay, here we are.
And please unmute Commissioner Cornell and unmute Commissioner Wheeler. Go ahead, Chuck.
Okay. I guess the, the issues that I stated earlier was like some of the churches. I think initially they thought that 50 or less that they could have like a service. But now with this new order, I think it's 10 and to follow the CDC's recommendations of the six feet. I guess, I, I don't know how to, how to actually deal with that because I attended two church services last Sunday. One church service was canceled. The pastor did it on Facebook, but they, they did have about 12 people there or somewhere around 12 people there. The other church I went to had about 20 people there. And they were thinking that 20 was okay, but they normally have 50 or 60 people there, but they didn't show up. A lot of the folks didn't show up at church. So those are some of the concerns I, I heard with this new ordinance. How would they deal with? I had a Pastor Hicks to call me this afternoon. He wanted to know because he has like Bible study, choir rehearsal and all of that stuff on Thursday nights and stuff like that. And under this, only 10 people. And he, he was under the impression that there's no need to have any of those things if it's 10 people because they have 15 or 20 people in their choir. So those were some of the concerns. And also the public shopping center, which is not far from the funeral home, there's still a lot of people there. And it's, and it's hot and it's just that some of the things, just from a viewpoint from me is that I, I don't know if this overkill or not, or could at least more people get in to get out? And the other thing I have, what if people are coughing or sneezing in the grocery store, especially around produce and stuff like that? I don't see how that would be safe either. So I mean, I'm just having some concerns, but I, I just think that I'm concerned about the first of the month coming up, annoying people getting their social security checks or their benefit checks and, and the chaos that's going to create because they can't get in the store to cash their checks and stuff like that and to grocery shops. So those are some of the issues and I don't know how we can address that. But everything else in the document, I'm okay with. The, the other thing is we had three services last week. One of the services, the pastor did limit the family to, family members only, only, but it was over 60 people there. So, and also we have a service tomorrow, which I think that they're limiting it only to family, no friends. And some people are complaining and all of that stuff, but I think they'd, they'd get over that. But, but I think that the issue that we have at this point is as essential businesses, our concern is that that is our business. People is our business and, and having services and with pastors are not telling folks to, to not come, that, that creates an issue for us as funeral directors because we have no real say-so in terms of who can come and who can not attend a funeral. But a graveside service is much easier because it's open and, and environment, so, but it's not a closed area where folks are. So those are some of the issues that, that we're having as a business and also with some of the pastors, trying to explain to them the issue.
Great. Okay, Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what I'll do is just kind of go through the document and, and then I'll make comments to what I just heard from Commissioner Byerly and Commissioner, and Commissioner Chestnut. So I would say that I, I like the approach that you took, Hutch. However, I, on the occupancy, I'm, I'm not a fan of using that type of approach. I think the intention is good. But I think if, if we can rely on the essential businesses to follow the CDC guidelines inside and out, and not just rely on it, but require it. And so what I would do on top of page three, last sentence on the first paragraph, I would, I would change that word "should" to "shall." So it would read "such businesses and operations shall practice social distancing and all other measures advised by the CDC." And then Tom Griffin sent in some wording as far as signage that I would add to that paragraph that says, "In addition, all retail establishments exempted pursuant to Section 9 shall post signage conspicuously in the establishment to remind and instruct customers of the CDC's recommendation to practice safe social distancing, including to maintain a distance of approximately six feet from other customers." So actually require that signage for essential businesses. I sent an email on the additions that I would add. So I don't need to go through those. I think you've been able to read those. I would just add back the Broward County ones. But by requiring the, the businesses to practice the social distancing, I think we accomplish what we're trying to accomplish without creating perhaps new issues with people standing in line and so on and so forth. I talked to a couple of folks at Publix and if they could use their staffing to ensure that folks inside the store, and, and certainly they, they, they have no problem with limiting it to 50% occupancy, but folks inside the store were staying separate, that that would be a, a much safer way than shuttling pharmaceuticals in and out while they're standing in line. To Commissioner Byerly's point, so those would be my comments. I would, I would strike, so I would add those five. I would strike paragraph 12, which I think limits it just to the medical. I agree with Commissioner Byerly's comments. I hadn't thought about pawn shops, so I would add that one. I think that's a, that's a good one as long as they're following the guidelines. I agree with his comments about open construction sites as I, as I made it in my email to you all. And I use car lots and cars. On that situation, I think if they're following the guidelines, most of that stuff is handled outside and I think it can be done. With regards to Chuck's comments on churches and funerals, I have no problem with expanding maybe the gravesides because it's outside. Again, as long as they practice social distancing, I think that's, you know, I think the safest job that someone can do right now is something outside. And when I've talked to some of the landscaping folks and I've talked to some of the construction folks, they've already implemented one driver to a job site so they don't have multiple people in cars when they get to the job sites, making sure that they're separated. They've sent all the folks home and they're all working from home as far as the office folks go. So very, very proud of the steps that our community and our business owners have already taken. And if we can put in the Broward exemptions that were taken out, I think that would solve 95% of the, the issues that I'm hearing. Now, certainly if we need to go farther in, in a week because it's not working, then, you know, like I go back to my first comments, first and foremost, we've got to make sure that we flatten the curve. But I think if our community can step up and show that they can help do that, that's a, a great place to be at this point. So those are my comments and unless anyone has any questions as to my email.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wheeler. And then I'll have comments.
Yeah, I, I went through this document and underlined and made notes across it. So I'm, I'm, you know, I would second the concern for the spacing in these stores, particularly we, we got a lot of information from folks about the Publix and having folks out in the heat there. I got, let's see, and also then of course, the building sites where people were concerned about having inspections done and that sort of thing. So, you know, my notes came from there. I don't know, are we going to go through this document? Are we just going to try to throw information or concerns out as, as they stick in our head?
Well, whatever works better for you. It'd be easier on whoever's taking notes, Bob Swain and others who have taken notes about what to change.
Okay. Well, you know, in terms of what we can actually change, I don't, I don't have language for change. Mine was based on conversation to get to the language to change. But I, and Ken, I haven't seen your email. You're usually pretty thorough with that. I had a concern voiced to me that I, I hadn't thought of is that these employees that are working in these places that were, are still open are pretty vulnerable at this point and probably should be considered as essential workers as well because they're on the front line and they are in very close proximity to the people that they're going through the checkout lines and, and that sort of thing. And probably need some kind of protective gear provided. And I don't know if they would have to do that for themselves or if we would consider them essential to the functioning of, of our society that we would, would help them find that equipment. But my, I have been really concerned about the folks that are having to work, whether they're comfortable working or not. And places like Cox, I think I, I sent some, a concern out to some of you all about businesses like this that we depend on, that our children are going to be using online services in order for their education. And also we've got maybe distractions for kids because they get into mischief if they're not busy enough. So I didn't know if there was any way that we could work with some of our businesses that would be targeting those, those populations, the kids that, that would not be foreclosed on, I mean, or have their billings shut down or late fees added to them because they're somehow not able to pay for those services. I don't, there's nothing in there that I could place that in there unless there's ways that we can ask businesses, local businesses, not to foreclose on folks' homes or take their cars back if they can't, you know, feed their kids even. So I couldn't, I couldn't find a place to put that one in there, even if we have the ability to encourage local businesses to back off some of our citizens who can't pay. What I see in this document though, that I would address would be the close proximity in the buildings and particularly the grocery stores and why we've chosen, what is it, a thousand feet? I think that's in there, a thousand feet for people to have this roaming space inside the store. I think that was... Anyway, businesses, the building industry, and so if you all can, if you have something you've addressed to that, I'm, I'm going to go look right now on this while you all are continuing our conversation, see what I can find, what you've done. All right? Sorry, guys, that's it.
Okay. Well, let me, let me speak to a couple of these issues. One is, I went to a couple of Publixes today, not first thing in the morning, but in early afternoon, talked to the manager at one for about a half hour, talked to a number of customers standing in line and a couple of employees. And my observation is that the wait time for people getting into both the Main Street Publix and the one on 39th and 13th was about 20 minutes. People were standing in the right order. They were being managed by the employees extremely well. There was not a single person who complained about it to me, saying, yeah, we, we need to do this. The other thing that I thought was fascinating was to see how the delivery services are booming. And that's part of the change that we need to force with this. And the way it works is with Instacart at Publix and, and there's other services, you order your stuff online, somebody comes grabs it, that person doesn't wait a bit. So you could actually be in your car... So you could actually be in your car, order an Instagram, somebody in the store fills it, brings it out, hands it to you. But nobody's handling any money. The whole thing, uh, makes a lot of sense, and that's the model that grocery stores need to go through in this time, not that we're just going to turn folks loose. There's no physical way with the layout of grocery stores that you can keep people six feet apart. The only way to do it is to force them to go just one direction through the entire store, come out the other end, not backtrack. And, uh, if, if you, um, didn't get something, you're stuck or you have to go back out and around. So the other thing that I noticed was people are shopping really fast. They know there's people outside waiting, they're in and out, they're really moving because two people go out and two people go in. Um, when I was talking to Tom Griffin about it, um, I said, well, when I talked to the manager at the, the big one, it's 55,000 square feet, they were assiduously, uh, following the rules, they were sending data back every half hour to their corporate headquarters. They were, when I asked the manager, how many do you think is really the right number in that store to get the separation and stuff you need? And he said, we could take one and a half or two times as many. So if the rule was one per 500 square feet, then that would reduce it. But let me tell you, the reason I'm not really all that interested in going to it right now is people have already sorted it out by the afternoon, whatever problems there were this morning, by the afternoon they sorted it out. The delivery services are starting to pick up. And when you drive up and you see a little line, you're going to make a decision about whether to wait or not. The other thing that we talked to them, I talked to the manager and Tom Griffin about, was they can institute a text reservation system where you show up, they give you, you give them the number, you go sit in your car so you're not, uh, standing, and they text you when you're, uh, you're next in line. So there's a lot of tech, uh, fairly quick and easy technological ways to handle the queuing up in the grocery stores. A real problem is not Publix. A real problem is Walmart, as far as I can tell, isn't really doing much about this. Um, the wards, the last time I was in wards, a couple of days ago, it was shoulder to shoulder. And, um, there's no way to socially distance in wards unless we institute some sort of, um, uh, rationing of the number of people that can be in the store. Um, I think what, uh, Tom is suggesting about, uh, nice signs and announcements and employees watching out, that's what we dial back to once we see the curve get, start going down. Right now the curve's gone straight up and the idea that we would loosen these restrictions now, I think sends the wrong message. Um, the, uh, the other thing is, in talking to the construction industry, and we maybe get, I know Michelle's got some stuff from them, and in talking to the, uh, car industry, um, I talked to, uh, the Leesburg City, uh, Leesburg mayor who happens to own a whole bunch of car dealerships, and he was telling me about all the things that they do already. Um, they all sounded great. And I said, well, what you need to do is you need to codify that, you need to get your, uh, your organizations to adopt these practices, you need to post them on the, uh, the job site, and then you need to abide by them so that we can write an order that says, no construction sites, no car lots, no whatever, except for those who abide by code number whatever that you guys have created. And you know better how to write that than we do because the car lot guy went on and on about all the things that they can do to make it, uh, safe for their, their customers and their employees. Same thing with the construction sites. For every boss who's called me about, um, don't shut us down, I've had three or four employees contact me and they're all in my emails and everything else, saying, I'm being asked to work in unsafe conditions. And so we need to stand up for the employees and let the bosses figure out how to get them back to work safely. And I'm very happy to be, I, I expect we'll be amending this order, uh, every couple of days for, uh, quite a while. There's plenty of ambiguities to fix and, and so forth. But the message we have to send to all these groups is you need to help us, help you sort out these problems because business has to change and it may have to change for months. And so let's not think that this is just something that's going to go away suddenly. Um, I don't know if you've been paying attention to the same news that I watch, but, um, the situation in New York now, in the greater New York area, is one out of every thousand people has coronavirus right now. And they're still on the upward curve. And, uh, at that rate, they're talking about, um, completely swamping their medical system in, in a matter of days. And so, um, I'm pretty adamant that we, we not start loosening things up right now. Now, if we need to do pawn shops, you know, that's, that's, uh, that's, that's fine with me. And, um, let me, uh, and why don't we go to the manager now? You've heard from me. Madam Manager, why don't you go through some of the, uh, input that the sheriff and some of the other, uh, cities are providing, and then we can, uh, have a broader discussion. Madam Manager, please unmute her. Madam Manager.
There you go. Um, okay. So, um, with regard to the grocery store issue, I received a lot of feedback, um, from Publix specifically, um, having to do, so some of their concerns, and they did talk about their curbside delivery options run through Instacart, but, um, they say they have a lack of Instacart shoppers and that, um, Instacart is run by a third party, not by them. Um, also, they have concern about the most vulnerable people, the senior citizens, standing outside in large groups during Senior Day, um, and that they only have two senior days. Um, let's see, I'm just kind of going through my email here. Um, that managers and associates who are trying to control the flow of, uh, people are not able to stand a safe distance from customers. Um, is that coming from me? Okay.
We don't know who it's coming from, but it's rock and roll.
Um, customers with health conditions, uh, there's pharmacies and services inside the grocery store, um, they're concerned about increased over purchasing and hoarding if they have to stand in a long line, they may try to get more items. Um, and then, so just from the sheriff's office, they did take some, uh, observations today, and primarily the issue with the lines had to do with Tuesday and Wednesday is Senior Day where from seven to eight AM on Tuesday and Wednesday, customers 65 and up, um, get to shop first. And so, um, just anecdotally, uh, the busiest Publix was, uh, 43rd Street had a hundred customers at opening, um, but when they were a plus in line, but they were down to an average of 15 customers. Um, the, the highest, uh, average was 30 on 16th Boulevard, but a lot of them had, um, less than 15, um, in line at any given time. Once that initial line went down, um, they were providing water to people in line. Uh, they did feel that once the line started moving and the store, uh, was opening, that it moved pretty quickly with people coming in and out. So that's just some of the, um, observations that were made by the sheriff's office. Of course, um, Publix specifically has requested to remove, uh, they, they did provide some suggested language, um, exempting, uh, grocery stores and supermarkets from the occupancy restriction or, um, retail establishments from the occupancy restriction if they post signage, um, reminding customers of the CDC's recommendation. So that's pretty much the grocery store issue. I don't know if you want me to move on or discuss grocery stores first.
Yeah, let's just knock this one out. And again, the way it's going to work, there won't be any motions, but you guys need to, uh, weigh in, uh, and basically our two options are signage and other control measures to, uh, implement the CDC guidelines or to continue with the, uh, square footage calculation that we're doing now, or to change the square footage calculation. And, um, I can tell you the texts that I'm getting on this, uh, as I'm sitting here is somebody saying, there is literally no way to socially isolate in Publix. Somebody was there when there was hardly anybody else in the store, and yet, uh, there's people stocking, you're walking by them, there's people coming out the other direction. So, uh, putting more people in there, um, well, even with 50 people in a big store, they're still not technically socially isolating because they're passing one another, but at least it, um, makes things, um, less likely that you bump into folks. So, Mike, do you have an opinion on, uh, stick with what we got, change it? What do you think?
Am I muted? Can you hear me? Uh, well, you, you, you made a pretty good argument. Um, I'm not sure about the one per thousand square feet. Again, I guess, I don't know where that came from, just off the top of your head or what? And I don't, we don't know how to.
Yeah, I did it because it's, uh, easy math for everybody to do, and I thought about it quite a bit before I came, came up with the number. The only ones doing it now, but I know some other folks are looking at it.
Okay. Um, I, I, the manager kind of outlined some of the possible unintended consequences of this, including hoarding, including, um, people having to stand in the heat, uh, maybe encouraging behavior towards people that aren't really positive, but, um, I'm okay with the idea of limiting access. And by the way, let me say, you can socially distance yourself, uh, if you're walking around and you're careful about it. I've been kind of making a little game of that the last few times I had to go out to see if I could. You have to do more walking. You can't just go up and down the aisles the way you usually do, but if you're conscientious, if you're thinking as we're encouraging everyone to be, you can in fact do a pretty good job of keeping a nice bubble around you, if everyone else is intent on doing the same thing. Checkout lines, the hardest part of course, uh, because you're standing right there in front of someone, I don't know what to do about that, but that's going to happen no matter how we do this, uh, whether we let them in one at a time or not. So, uh, I'm okay with, rather than just opening the floodgates, maybe having some constraints, I'm just not really comfortable with the one per thousand feet. You said you spoke with some of the managers. I would love to be able to get, you know, five of them in a room and just describe the problem that we're confronting and ask them, how, how many people do you think it's safe to let in at a time? Is it half capacity? I don't really know how that works. Is there a fire department kind of maximum on the number of people who can be in a grocery store at any given time? But I'm seeing nodding heads, so. Um, maybe start with that and rather than, rather than doing this as a fraction of one person per X number of square feet, rather as a percentage of capacity. And a little bit more, I think, than what we're seeing right now. 50 people in a, in a good sized Publix. And, and by the way, let me just finally say, you may be right that the, a lot of kinks work out in the first few days, uh, and we don't see line after a couple of days if we were to stay the course right now. That may be the case. Um, so I'm really kind of open on this. I'll wait to see what everyone else has to say. I would like to do a little bit better job of rationalizing how we, um, the number that we're coming up with rather than a percentage of square feet.
Let me, okay. The number, the, uh, the way that, uh, occupancy is calculated, because remember the way we had it before was, uh, 50% of your allowable legal occupancy and what the city was 50% of your occupancy or 50, which of, whichever number is the lower. And, um, and we did not, the county did not go with that in the, um, in the first order we did a, a while back. And, um, the reason that I went with this instead of that other one is that I think, I think it's actually going to work better than, uh, because the other number, you had to count employees in there, and so it, it created an incentive to get rid of employees so you cram more customers in your store. And I can tell you, I got a, a complaint from a city commissioner about a couple liquor stores on the east side that were jammed full of people. And those liquor stores, under our rules, can now have two customers at a time in there because they're, they're relatively small. And, um, that's a better number than 25 that, that were in there. So, yeah.
Let, let me just close out my comment on this then by saying that I think it would be a good thing if we could pick a number and arrange a situation so that we don't have significant lines in front of grocery stores. And if we go through a couple of days and people logic out new ways to, to do their business and we see those lines coming back down, I'm okay with as tighter restriction as we can get away with, without long lines in front of the grocery stores. And I'm willing to wait a couple of days to let this sort itself out and maybe, you know, come Thursday, if we're still seeing long lines and people getting frustrated and, and hoarding behavior, we need to revisit it. I'm okay waiting for a couple of days.
All right. Thank you. And any of the other commissioners want to weigh in on this? Go ahead, unmute them, please. Is ever in charge of the muting needs to be on it here? Chestnut, Cornell, and Mary Helen, please unmute.
Hutch, you picked a compelling argument. Um, I like going to maybe 500, uh, if that helps with the lines. I don't really know, I, I hear your argument on the occupancy 50% number. Um, I, I think we definitely need to figure out, uh, signage with regards to informing folks and prioritizing seniors. Uh, you know, on senior days, it seems like we, having seniors waiting in line is, uh, creating kind of a different problem that I know is not your intention. Um, and then whatever we can do to help facilitate the Instacart model, uh, whether that's, um, well, I, I don't know. I mean, I, food to me is, you know, right up there is the highest priority. And so frustrating, um, our, our citizens who are trying to get some essentials when they decide the one time they're going to leave the house for that day is something that I think we, we gotta be really, really aware of, um, because most folks are not going out, they're, they're, unless they have to. And, and one of the have-tos is a grocery store, and if they have to drive around for two hours, um, because they can't wait in line, it's, it's creating a different problem. So, um, I, I would be in favor of actually going to 500, seeing if that solved it. If that doesn't solve it, then, you know, thinking about something else. I, I really, uh, agree with Mike on the idea of keeping folks out of line, but I, I don't think it's something that we should wait till the end of the week on. I think food is something that we should address far in advance before the weekend. So those are my comments.
Go ahead, Commissioner Chestnut.
Yeah, now, okay. Um, I agree with, uh, both of the comments from Commissioner Barley and Commissioner Cornell. Uh, but in reference to your concern, Hutch, about the delivery services and online services, there are a lot, lot of folks, uh, uh, on the east side of town don't have internet services or have the resources to pay for, um, a delivery service, uh, to them. And so those are the people that I see on Main Street in lines. And so that, that's, that's a major concern. Uh, I like Ken's comment, maybe 500, maybe that, just to see if that, um, stopped the, the long lines, because the, the line now at Publix is from Publix to the Chinese restaurant. And if you are familiar with the shopping center, you know, that's a pretty good distance away, uh, from there. So, um, that, that sounds good. Uh, in reference to signage and, um, control measures, I think that that's a positive and, and to let the people know, um, uh, what's going on. And, um, I think that some of my issues, uh, like the liquor stores, that's not a concern to me. I think what's concerned to me about people actually having food and be able to get, get food and all of that stuff, uh, so that's more important to me than a liquor store. Um, you know, you know, they can do that one per thousand or whatever, but the grocery store, it just seems, uh, that we're preventing people from getting this, the groceries and going in. And then I have other concerns that, that people who are, uh, are in there that are coughing and sneezing over produce and stuff like that, that, that's a major concern to me. Are, are, should we be requiring people to wear masks, uh, so that, uh, those folks who are coughing and sneezing, at least they'll be coughing and sneezing into a mask and not, uh, contaminating everything. Uh, so, so those are some of my issues and concerns. I think that, uh, anything, and, and, and my last question is, um, where are we with the testing kits in this community? Are, are we getting them or is it because people? Or is it because people are going to the hospital and, and going to the health department is how we're finding out that they were travel related type of incidents in terms of the coronavirus? I mean, if we're not getting the testing kits, we might have a whole lot more people than 35 that's in our community that is contaminated. And I'm, I'm just concerned. And I don't know how do you begin to isolate people and try to control it or try to control that curve or flatten that curve if we don't know what the actual numbers are and, and where it's coming from? So those are some of my concerns. If we're not getting any testing kits and stuff like this, and it's just happening as people go to the hospital or something like that, or health officials, and we get those numbers, I mean, that's kind of scary to me too, because it might, they might have infected more people than just those 35. Those 35 might have contaminated a whole lot of people before we actually knew it. If we don't have any testing kits to find out where. And I think I heard this morning on NPR where that down in the villages, they are testing all of the seniors and anybody who wants to be tested in those areas to come by and get the temperature or, yeah. And so I think that that's sort of important.
Escape of what we're talking about here. And then Mary Helen, did you want to say something? Yeah, unmute Mary Helen, please.
Mary Helen, you have to initiate it, then he can do it.
Okay.
There you go.
Got it, thank you. No, this is really serious. And Ken, basing the seriousness on your numbers, the figures that you're coming up with, I had a gentleman who is a chemist here who's working on antivirus at this point with a company up in Alachua who has predicted that would probably be within the, the end of the month, there would be 500 cases here. That's what they are predicting. And so in terms of making this a serious thing by, by this thousand feet, you know, what we're saying is, you know, this is, this is not a joke, guys, this is real. And also the fact that we had seniors going early in the morning, I think alarmed a lot of people, realizing that maybe this was serious. Maybe if, if we're going to, if, if we're going to have a time where people who are more vulnerable come in, maybe we need to do it more than just two days. We could do it, you know, throughout the week, that this is a time that these people show up. I haven't had any trouble getting, I didn't go to the Publix this morning, my husband did. And of course, that's when he was hearing people say, of course, they're not going to vote for us next time. But in any case, we've got this, folks who were lined up outside. My question is, you guys who saw the lines, were they six feet apart?
Yes.
They were lined up, they were, so that's one of the reasons the lines may have looked long? Yes?
Well, the ones I saw were not. So they were like talking and having conversations, so, you know, so.
Oh, boy, okay. Well.
That's the unintended consequence, I think, is that, is that because the six, to me, six feet is the biggest thing. And six feet outside, obviously better than six feet inside. But if we can rely on our.
There's the picture this afternoon at Publix, everybody's six feet apart. There's a line, there's somebody managing it. There was no line at Winn-Dixie.
What public is that?
That's the one on 39th and 13th. And it's 5,500 square feet. And this was just like, not even three hours ago, and four hours ago. And there was three people outside wards and they only let a relatively few people in there. Folks, we are trying to discourage people from going shopping, not make it easier to go shopping. That's the whole point of this. We're trying to make it harder for people to just, let's go shopping. Because what people were doing is they were just, with all this time on their hands, whether they wanted it or not, let's go shopping. My wife comes on three or four times a week, that's nuts.
So how do I eat, Huch?
You go shopping once, you get what you need and you get out of there. As opposed to, there's plenty, there's no, there's hardly anybody waiting in line at these things.
Well, those are at some Publix. But I, I, I think that if you had an idea of what's going on Main Street, you, you would have a different. Every Publix is not the same and everybody's not the same. So it's, it's just difficult. I, I'm just saying, I think that.
There's the video, but right there, there's hardly a line at all. And that was at 2:00 this afternoon.
That wasn't when I saw it. So, I mean, you know, anyway.
People will figure this out, just like a traffic jam. They'll understand there's certain times you don't go. They'll understand how to get deliveries. They will figure this out. People are smart.
So Mary Helen, you're, you're for keeping it at 1,000 right now or going to 500?
No, I'm, I'm for keeping it at 1,000 at this point to have, make sure that people know that we're serious. If we're staying at home, if we're, if I'm here, rather than being there looking at you guys, this is serious business. And I'm really concerned too about the workers in these stores that are not six feet apart. They're maybe, maybe three feet apart, you know, from these young workers that we have who are doing business here. So, no, I, I think that we need to stick to, to our guns for at least this first week. If this is where we're looking for critical masks. And just the, and let, so that people really understand that this is serious. This is really serious.
All right, thank you, Michelle.
Yes, so just as a reminder to the board that we've been talking about this in the context of Publix and grocery stores. Publix is the one who brought this to our attention. However, this restriction on occupancy applies to all essential businesses with the exception of medical related. So this applies not just to the Publix, but to the Walmart. It also applies to any other business that we have said is an essential business. So just that reminder when you're looking at these occupancy numbers and if you want to make any distinction between the grocery stores and the Walmarts and the hardware stores and the, you know, so you've got a lot of different things that, that applies to. Next, as far as signage, I can tell you that signage is commercially available now. I was at an OfficeMax a week ago and there was available for purchase COVID-19 signage that you could put in your place of business that has a lot of the hand washing and distancing information on it. So that stuff is, is more available now commercially for purchase. On the Instacart issue, frankly, buying online or for pickup or delivery, to the extent there's more than this business that has it, I know Walmart does it as well. We can certainly use it as part of our messaging that we're putting out to the public to encourage them to use these services to the extent that they can to avoid things like waiting in lines, you know, not just lines outside, waiting in lines at the register for items. So we can certainly use our messaging capability to get that message out. I do want to add, there were some questions on testing and numbers. We do have the, the higher number per capita. We also have a higher number of testers, testing that's occurring per capita. So that is part of that number that we're seeing. We have maintained at 37 as of the results that came out just shortly. So we are still at 37. We do expect it to rise, as the health department told us. We do need to assume that community spread is occurring in the county. So that is something to be mindful of, however. They are working on trying to do more testing. But testing is, is an issue in a lot of places. In the villages, they're testing, they're still looking at the criteria, even though they have a drive up test site. So those criteria.
Can I speak to that? I had a, I just want to add for the commissioners, I had a, a long conversation with Paul Myers today. And the email that I sent out Sunday night talked about monitoring. That's not monitoring, folks, that's actually the test kits. And those, those ratios are confirm exactly what Michelle said, that we are essentially testing twice as many people as Broward and Miami. So that's, that's good. Paul and I both acknowledge it's not enough. We want to continue to try to increase that. But Alachua County, from a testing standpoint, is double what men, double, and in many cases, triple what many others are. They're working on increasing that every day. And I just wanted to make that point because I did have that conversation with Mr. Myers.
All right, let's move on from here and let's talk about pawn shops. Pawn shop, you know, not. And, oh, Mike, you have, Mike has something, go ahead, Mike.
And just to be clear, in order to get acknowledged, should we just do what I just did? Or what is the protocol?
Yeah, just do that.
Okay, so before we move on, I'd like to wrestle one thing to the ground before we move on, if that's all right with everyone. We seem to have two folks who want to stay with what we're doing right now, three people who have some concerns, including myself. Again, one of the critical pieces here seems to be, and it was a different opinion just among the board, as to whether or not there are actually significant lines. I don't know, I would like to know. I think it's important that we not have sizable lines become a regular part of the, of, of, of the feature, regular part of what's in front of the grocery store, because we're going to encourage alternative problems. One of which we haven't really talked about, and that is, to my knowledge, none of the surrounding counties are doing this correctly. None of them are doing stay at home orders, as far as we know. And if that's the case, you've got a whole band of people around the county who may just choose to go to a different county. It's, where we are, we're equidistant between Gainesville and DeKalb. And you want to go down there where they're not doing any of this, you're just more likely to import some of the problems back into the community or spread it. You're going to see that kind of reaction. That's one of the things that I think people will adapt to, is to go somewhere they don't usually go in order to avoid lines. If we could stay with what we're doing for a couple more days, like Ken, I don't think I want to wait a whole week if the problem's not getting better. But if we can wait a couple of days and see if the problem is beginning to improve, then I'm okay walking away from it. But that means having some way to kind of measure what's happening. I don't know if that means sending a staff person out there every four hours or 12 hours for a couple of days to, to count a couple of the stores or what. But if there's a way that we could really know what's happening, it would be helpful for me. So are we planning to meet again? What is the plan for the next time we're going to get our heads together?
Well, first of all, you can always provide input via email that we can all read. We can't converse back and forth. And secondly, the, we expect to be doing either this evening or probably tomorrow, this, a new order will come out that fixes the problems that we've got. In terms of the meetings like this, we can do them however often you guys want to do them.
It just went into effect today. So I, I would like to get a couple of days of feedback and maybe some data if we have it to see if it's causing undue problems. To the manager's point, I do distinguish between food and everything else.
Maybe a Friday, maybe meet a Friday.
All right, we'll reassess.
And it helps us going into the weekend.
Well, you guys go to a grocery store and check it out for yourself. I drove around a half dozen today and what I saw was awesome. And everybody I talked to in line was, yeah, we understand, this is cool. And I also understand that we need to discourage people from going out. And this is one way to do it.
I agree with all that. Just quickly, as far as everything else, I'm okay with leaving it all alone. Everything besides grocery stores, lines everywhere else, it's not a life and death issue.
Right. Okay, let's talk about the pawn shops next. Why don't you guys just give me a thumbs up, a thumbs down? You want pawn shops in? Okay. Okay, so, manager?
Yes, so we have had several emails and questions regarding pawn shops. Overall, the reasoning for requesting that pawn shops remain open is that they lend money. And that is the reason why they are saying they are an essential business as opposed to non-essential. So I just wanted to relay that so that you all could discuss that. That's, that's the primary reason they're requesting.
Before you go, before you go.
Hang on, a few poor commissioners need a loan, just talk to me, go ahead, Commissioner Cornell.
Before you go through all these items, do you agree with my initial comments, which is to eliminate 12 and make the wording shall instead of should? That's kind of a, that's kind of a structural thing for the rest of the discussion. So you limited the occupancy to everything except for medical. And what I was saying was that we should impose shall, shall practice social distancing in all non-essential businesses, along with signage, if we can do that. And then, and then for like all non-essential businesses? Or is your thought, is your thought, we're going, you, you want to keep the ratio per thousand for all essential businesses?
Yeah, I think right now that's, that's fine. And we will hear from folks and next, by Friday, we'll, we'll kind of know. And we're going to go out and do some exploring.
Do you like, do you like imposing the word shall instead of should? Which basically says if you have a business and you're non-essential, you must follow the CDC guidelines, it's not a recommendation. Well, that, that makes me feel better about pawn shops because I know that they're going to be following those recommendations inside. That, that's, that's why I'm asking that on the front end. Because my up or down, and my email was based on the fact that if we add these as essential businesses, that we are also requiring them to social distance.
I don't understand exactly where is this? I'm looking at paragraph 12.
No, I'm sorry, so I, I'm on paragraph four, little d.
Right.
Last sentence.
Right, I see it's such businesses shall practice social distancing and other measures.
Yeah, because I think if we're going to require that, then I think we can add some of these essential businesses, which really will help, I think, our economy, but also help make sure that folks are, are, are practicing good social distancing. And so if you're good with changing the should to shall, I'm good with pawn shops.
All right.
Okay, I just want to make that point.
All right, so pawn shops, we'll put those back in. We took out car lots, which show up in some of the other ones. Do you want to leave that out or do you want to put it back in? Let's just get a, does anybody have any questions about that? Again, I talked to that guy who's, has car lots and he gave me all the reasons why they should be considered essential. They were in the Broward one as well. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's, I, no, I am.
So you want a real issue, though? I mean, one, one example. Right now, if people don't have any money to go be buying cars, I mean, with a crisis like this, I, I wouldn't go out looking for a car unless I really needed a car. And it's in the public, I mean, it's outside. So I, I don't know. I mean, you know, those are just some of my thoughts, I mean.
What was a one example of why they needed it open?
Well, the, that there were people who were coming off their leases and they needed to swap in cars. They rent cars out of their car lot. You know, there, there were lots of other things. One, the guy told me that one out of every 18 customers who's having their cars served, one out of 18 sales is somebody who was having their car serviced and they found out their transmission's blown or whatever. And while they're there in the, so we're, we're leaving, we're leaving the maintenance open. So if they're doing that, that a certain number of people are going to buy the cars anyway. Okay, Mike, you have an opinion on car lots?
Really don't have a strong opinion. Am I, am I the swing vote here?
Maybe. I mean, when I looked at essential, I really wanted to be able with a straight face to say essential. And with Commissioner Chestnut, I didn't exactly see people during this.
It's not essential. I mean, if you're saying it's essential, it's not essential, really. I mean, that's why we have public transportation, other, I mean, other ways of transportation. I'm, I'm not trying to be hard here, Huch, but it's just, I don't see it as an essential service.
It's essential when you don't have transportation and you need to get a car. I mean, then it becomes essential. I, I think they can practice outside in a way that, that doesn't require.
They can, but I agree with that.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that they come up with best practices and that we'll make it. So it sounds like we've got, we're putting car, car lots back in there. And then we've got the churches, right now, the way the church is, is listed is, this was all over the place in the other orders. And Madam Attorney, will you point us to what the, all the language that refers to churches and see how we can straighten this out?
It's, uh, page eight. Uh, I see, uh, FF and, uh, where is that? I'm sorry. No, it's, no, it's not. It's page nine. 16 religion services. And the mortuaries is, uh, page eight FF.
Bob, do you want to weigh in on that?
I'm sorry.
Can't hear you, Bob.
We need Bob.
So under, I'll get started. Are you on, Bob?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry. I was trying to capture the, the palm, the, uh, pawn shop thing.
Right.
What's a question?
Mort, mortuaries, funeral homes and cemeteries, including funeral homes and crematory services. Under FF.
Those are okay. Those are okay. 16 is the one we're looking at.
Right.
Not limit religious services at any location, but all persons performing or attending religious services are recommended to comply with all measures advised by the CDC included limiting gatherings to no more than 10 people and practicing social distancing of at least six feet between persons. So that's what's in the order right now. And, but it also says is recommended to comply, which, uh, isn't just, uh, it's not as strong as a, a shall. So if they want to go against the recommendations of the CDC, then they can certainly do that.
Chuck. Chuck.
Yes.
Are you, are you including, uh, in, in your list of concerns, regular church services? Or is it only things associated with?
Well, it's regular church services and the, uh, like they have Bible study on Wednesday night, Thursday night, they have choir rehearsal and stuff like that. And then on Sunday is the regular service. And so, but as several Sundays, a lot of the churches did not even have service because of, of the outbreak and all of that, and the pastors having some concerns. But there were some churches who did, and I attended two of them, uh, one with showers of blessings on 15th Street, uh, where they actually just had the pastor and about 12 choir members. Uh, they did it on Facebook, their service on Facebook. Of course, my church, Mount Pleasant United Methodist Church, they did it on Facebook. Uh, I went to Gateway Christian Center and they had about 20 people there. So, um, my concern is because from the pastors, they just wanted to know, is it 50 or less? Or is it the new thing that came out, which is 10 people?
Well, if we're talking, if we're talking about, I'm sorry?
There's two ways to look at this. One is the, um, one person per thousand square feet, which is if they were, uh, you know, like a retail establishment. And the other way to look at it is, um, are people actually capable of socially distancing in the church? Be aware that some of the out, some of the worst outbreaks have happened in church. And because of the way people get together and they're shaking hands and they're passing plates around and they're, uh, all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, there is not asked, I, I would definitely distinguish between a funeral, uh, procession or something like that as opposed to, uh, a church service. And in my mind, a church service is, is like a football game. I mean, for purposes of what we're talking about right now, it's quintessentially the kind of social activity we're trying to stop. Uh, large groups of people for a non-life threatening situation don't need to be gathered right now. So I'm not interested in an exception for that. But some of the more specific instances, like a funeral or others you may be aware of, I'm, I'm definitely open to making exceptions for them.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I can only talk about what, what we're doing right now. And of course, uh, several of the pastors just said family only. Uh, and, uh, we're, we're, we're suggesting to families about graveside services. Uh, and of course, we have one Friday. So, uh, they wanted a church service, but I think that the pastor was a real reluctant to tell folks not to come. So he just decided, uh, not to weigh in on it. And so we just suggested the family to have a graveside service. So, and that's what they chose to do because of the, the virus. And that, that was the main reason. So, um, so other issues are with, uh, some of the church services where pastors are just allowing it to occur like last Saturday. So.
All right. Well, I mean, what, what changes, if any, do we need to make to our language if we want to explicitly take the position that we, no church gatherings until this is over?
Yeah, I think it needs to be strong wording, wording so that the pastors in the community will know that they can't do it. So that, that's what I'm seeing because they calling me, asking me, what does this mean?
Does anyone disagree with that? Any commissioners disagree with that position?
Yeah, I have a problem. It reads, this order does not limit religious services in any location.
But it does limit the people though.
Well, and then, and it goes on to say it's just recommended. I don't know if we run into problems by saying we're, we're, uh, we're canceling church services, but we're not, but people can go to Home Depot. I mean, that, that's kind of nuts. I, I mean, on the other hand, most churches are not tens of thousands of square feet. Because it, to put 10 people in a thousand per square foot, you'd have to have a 10,000 square foot church. There's probably only one or two of those in, in.
Why would we not just make them same limitations as everywhere else?
Yeah. I mean, what's the difference between this and a, and a hipoderm? I mean, if we're going to start down. Can you go to a theater and watch a movie as long as there's not too many people there? Or, or plus who's going?
The, the theaters are closed.
Yes.
That is the point I'm making. Uh, it, it seems like a social gathering is a social gathering. We're, we're concerned about the COVID virus and that's what we're trying to stop. And the criteria should apply to that. Now, obviously you have to eat. We're talking about exceptions for things like food and medicine and doctors. But, and I understand, I'm not suggesting that a person's state is something that's light or irrelevant and it's very important to them. But there are other ways that you can meet those needs other than going to your traditional gatherings right now until this thing blows over. That's where I feel about it.
I, I agree. And I agree with, with Chuck that we, all the funerals, to the extent possible, should be graveside and folks separated by six feet. I mean, the last thing we want is a, is a, is a contagious spread because of a social gathering in a church, for instance, that would be terrible.
Yeah. I'm, I'm gathering from some of the facial expressions on the other screens here that maybe we're talking about something that we can't actually do. So it's, it's someone wanting to, in that middle of the road.
I think the pastors just wanted to know, was it the 50 versus this 10? That's all. I think that that was their concern to me. So.
All right, let's, let's unmute Michelle.
The one earlier said 50 or less. And so they were going by that. And then some didn't have, and then some did. And so now if we're going to 10, it's just not want to have it. That's all I'm thinking.
Please mute all the commissioners and let's listen to Michelle.
So the reason that we still allow church services is because a large majority of churches are doing church services through Facebook Live and other streaming platforms. So we're allowing them to be present to do that, to conduct that service. Um, the 10 says, but if anybody shows up, it's, it, we're recommending it's limited to 10. But, um, we want to make sure that they can continue to conduct those services, um, at their church facility so they can stream those to people who are at home.
I'm okay with all that.
That sounds good. Um, uh, I, I want to bring up one other thing about the, um, the grocery stores that have pharmacies. And that is when people show up to pick up their, um, farm, stuff they have to get at the pharmacy, they should be able to be led right in, get them and go. Because, um, what they can't do is stop and get some, some Fruit Loops and some, uh, a six pack of beer at the same time. Cause that just means they're cutting in line. But if they are there just for pharmaceuticals, uh, or something from the pharmacy, they, uh, the managers would like to be able to, you know, lead them in, let them pay, get them out of there. And I think that makes sense because some of those people are going to be sick. They don't need to be standing in line. And some of them are old and, um, so that's an exception that I hope Bob will write into it for grocery, for, for grocery stores that have pharmacies. Um, folks can go straight in because that's sort of the medical thing anyway. And we should not be restricting that. Uh, let me see, on my list, uh, let's talk about construction sites and how we're going to manage that. Um, you want to talk a little bit about that, Michelle? Michelle?
Yep. Okay. So we've gotten two letters on the construction issue and a lot of questions on the construction issue. Uh, actually three, when you look at, uh, the housing letter that was, that actually came in while we were started, while we started this, uh, Zoom meeting. So I did receive a letter, um, from Eric Drummond, um, with CPPI, who basically talked about the, the procedures that they have put in place to protect their employees, um, and is asking that construction be made, um, as, uh, an essential function, uh, particularly, um, that some of the comments we've received is, is needing, for example, housing, uh, that's the one we received earlier. If they can build houses to put people in so they have a place to go stay, um, they want to be able to do that. Uh, the, we have already allowed certain construction and that has to do with repair and maintenance. Um, and the decision was made earlier this week from the county as far as what functions are, uh, essential and non-essential that we do as a county, um, so that we can have the maximum amount of employees not out working, um, in this environment to not do inspections any longer unless they were emergency inspection. So your roof is leaking, you have to get the roof fixed. They can inspect it. They would be on an on-call basis for that. But if we're not doing inspections, construction's going to cease. So along with, um, this decision on construction, uh, particularly as it relates to, you know, the, the residential and commercial market, um, if you make this decision, we will then, uh, we either are going to tell our inspectors to business as usual or not, but it's going to impact this.
Well, I, I mean, if I could speak to that, Hutch?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think, I think, and I said in my email, we should add open construction sites irrespective of type of building, and we should add moving storage and relocation services. I mean, folks have to live somewhere and they're constantly moving. I think all of these industries that are related to those two things, moving and construction, are taking significant steps and things will take longer, but they understand that. And I, so I, I think that to the extent they understand that maybe an inspection isn't going to be within 24 hours, it may be a little late. But we're doing things so that the inspector is safe, the workers are safe, um, and, and the, and the citizens are safe. Then I think we should add these into exceptions. That's my opinion.
Okay. Um, Mike and then Chuck.
Well, I, uh, I, I, I think everyone's on board with the, uh, open construction sites continuing, right? Anyone disagree with that?
I, I want to, I want to send people home, but that's just me.
So you don't, you think an existing site that's open, utilities provided to it, everything working, we should shut those down as well?
Well, first of all, um, my understanding is we were doing inspections to help people close out or to, if they're finishing some phase, like, um, and then that's it. We're not going to do the next inspection because that, that way people will finish their plumbing or finish their framing or whatever, whatever they hit and leave the job in a safe, safe situation.
Okay. Well, that's sort of the distinction I'm raising here. So, um, finishing existing construction, everyone agrees with that, except Hutch, you kind of want to like stop them at a phase and not allow them to finish the entire project. I understand you correctly. And then the other.
Weeks.
Right. And then the other issue is, well, it's probably a couple of weeks, obviously. But, um, then the other issue is, do we allow new, new projects to continue? Because, you know, the overwhelming majority of the emails we've received on this, obviously coming from the, you know, construction industry and associated trades is that, uh, there shouldn't be any restrictions. And I guess maybe that's the discussion I thought we were going to get into. But does anyone other than Commissioner Hutchinson think we ought to close down, uh, existing?
Well, Mike, I think, I think if we change the wording from should to shall, as far as shall, uh, incorporate into their business CDC practices inside and out, so, which involves distancing, then, um, I, I already know virtually every business I talked to in the last 24 hours has, has already done that a week ago.
So wait a minute, are they, are they cleaning the porta potty after every use?
Are they cleaning the porta potty that's outside?
Yeah.
I mean, um, I didn't ask that question. I don't know.
No, they're not. And that's one of the things the workers were telling me, is there's no way you can be on a job site all day when, when everybody's using the porta potty. That's one of the main ways this, this disease gets around folks. And, uh,
I, I don't think, I think vol, a reliance on voluntary compliance with these standards at a construction site, you work those jobs, I, it seems a little unrealistic to me. Uh, people were starting with good intentions, but you're halfway through the day and you're working hard and you're tired and you're swapping out tools and you're just doing things around you all the time. But I think it's going to make it very, very difficult to comply with those standards. So I, but again, you know, there's, there's a counter argument has to do with, this is all, a lot of it's cost benefit and, and, and sites that are already open and it's got people trying to bring it to a point where they can wind down their operations. I definitely won't think that we should allow that. Uh, I still haven't made my mind up yet about whether or not we ought to allow for brand new projects to kick off, even using the standards that Commissioner Cornell is describing. So I'll wait and hear what the rest of you have to say.
Commissioner Wheeler?
I'm, I'm good with finishing up. I'm not, I'm not in support of starting new projects at this point because we don't even know what the economy is going to hold for us. And, and I would just say that if people have got investments and time and money in projects right now that need to be finished up, that that's, that would be okay. Um, are you hearing from workers there who are concerned about being on the job? And are there repercussions if those people choose not to go to work because of this that you, that you know of, Hutch?
Well, we're hearing about repercussions for not showing up at work. That's like one of the main messages we're getting is that the nail salon guy says, I have to keep showing up, or the barber, uh, I have to keep showing up or they're going to fire me. I mean, there's a number of them that have contacted me directly saying, this is not safe where I'm working. I don't want to be here. But they're, they're telling me if I don't show up, I'm going to get fired.
Well, we put more of those in the non-essential workers. Those are non-essential, right? But what about the, the construction, the construction workers? Are you hearing anything about them wanting?
I specifically heard about the issue of the porta potties. And when I talked with the health department about it, they, they pointed me to the thing that says, um, the way you get coronavirus is through, you know, bathroom, basically. And, and you know, they're not cleaning them after every use.
Yeah. I thought, I, I thought the, I thought I saw an email that said that they were actually. I mean, maybe, maybe they aren't. But I thought, I thought that the, the builders, um, the, the Builders Association sent in protocols that they were actually cleaning them after every use. Is that right?
There's, uh, protocols. I mean, I certainly encourage it. And what I, when I talked to Eric Drummond today with the Builders Association, I said, you guys need to put together the list of all the things that you're going to do. It needs to be able to be posted on the job site so everybody can see that you're doing them, that you're supposed to do them. And then those are the job sites that we ought to allow. And anything, anybody that's not following, which is all the social distancing, but hygiene and sanitation, if they're not doing that.
Your approach would be they came up with standards and then as long as they follow those standards and we could check them randomly, or then they would be allowed to be open, like on an exception, on an exception basis?
That, that would be my approach with use car lot, or car lots and a number, a number of others like that, that in my opinion are not essential. They're important to keep the economy going. Uh, I totally understand that. And, um, and I think those jobs can be done safely, but they have to really be focused on doing it. And the workers have to know that the, these are the rules that they're going by. And somebody has to come by and say they're happening. And frankly, the workers will tell us if they're not, they're not working in safe conditions. They're doing it now.
Right.
Do we know how many sites there are that would require a special, uh, uh, special consideration to continue?
We don't know how many open permits there are right now. I mean, there's.
A lot. There's a lot.
Probably hundreds.
Okay, okay. But they wouldn't fall into the category of being projects that need to be finished in a timely manner? You know, that's time sensitive?
Um, Michelle?
Okay. If we, if we don't issue new permits for the next few weeks, there will be no new projects, at least in the unincorporated area. there will be no new projects, at least in the unincorporated area.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the new projects. And again, because of everything that's going on, most people are, are not really generating new projects. But I am concerned, I, I mean, the rule ought to be something like, your job can be taken to the next permit that you can get. So if it's a roofing job, they can finish the roofing job or whatever, and then you send everybody home. So whatever subs are on the site right now, you can finish that framing because we don't want people, we don't want to throw people off a site when they got something half-framed. That's just unsafe. But, but it almost, it ought to be, and, and we actually did that the other day for somebody. He'd finished the job, he didn't have the final inspection. And so we sent an inspector out there so he could close out the job, get paid, totally makes sense. But what we need to do is set those standards so that job sites are shutting down until there's a, a clear indication that they understand the rules, we understand the rules, and we have a way of writing that into our order that says, as long as you're following these standards, we'll let you get back to business.
So your thought is instead of adding what I suggested, that we get them to write the rules and then you would add it on Friday when we met again if we're all happy with it, is that your?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm okay with that, bro.
Okay. All right, so that's what we'll do, that makes sense. And let me see, I'm looking at the list of things you specifically brought up. Madam Manager, are there some things that you, that we haven't talked about yet? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, so the next one would be we've received requests from, and I think we've talked about it, so it's probably already something that we've decided to do, but I wanted to bring it up because we have, everybody's been getting requests. That's the insurance industry, we've had requests from Nationwide and Blue Cross Blue Shield. Insurance industries were essential business under the other orders that we've looked at, but we removed insurance industries. So if everyone's okay, I'm not sure if everyone's okay with leaving those.
I am.
Let's get them back in.
Okay.
Get paid.
Commissioner Cornell already brought this one up, the moving, storage and relocation companies. We've had questions from UF from their student body, folks about, UF students are being required to move out. They use, some of them use movers and they would like to make sure that that isn't hampered.
Yeah, I'm for that, you okay with that, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we have, let's see, we've already talked about construction. I believe we've already addressed this to Mr. Chair. We did have some requests from the swimming pool industry and we did talk about the need for maintenance of pools and spas. We don't want mosquitoes or other issues, especially if this goes on for several weeks. So we're, okay?
That includes the landscaping, outside landscaping, if they're practicing best practices?
Yes, we had talked about landscaping, I, I think, I thought we were going to limit that, Mr. Chair, to just doing necessary work as opposed to trimming a shrub or mowing the lawn. It was more of cutting a tree. If we're going to do landscaping in general, I need to know that.
What do you guys think? I mean, generally speaking, these guys are working outside, they're generally kind of nobody wants to get near them anyways.
Low risk, I think that's a good.
Yeah.
All right.
I think it's good.
All right, leave them.
Okay, the next thing that I had was real estate. So on the real estate issue, we had had several questions from Realtors today. We did, in our discussions with the Chair and Legal on the request that came in from real estate agencies, said that we did not want to impair contract and they could go through with existing contracts to the extent that they needed to perform functions. But if, and if interacting with the public is part of that, they needed to practice the social distancing and CDC recommendations. However, we did say no showings. And so I know there are some questions and concerns about that as well as accepting potentially new listings to start doing projects or start doing sales where there has not been a contract formed as of now. So that's still open for discussion. I know a couple of you had concerns about that.
Ken, with the real estate industry, how can they do this safely?
I, I will tell you that the large brokers that I've been dealing with since prior to we, to last week have all kind of moved all of their folks home. The independent contractors is how most people practice, so they practice on their own. They closed down all open houses. Essentially, they've moved to best practices under NAR guidelines with appointment only, both for the seller and also for the buyer. They've implemented standard questions that are consistent with the questions that we are requiring for childcare centers and with regards to have you traveled. And if you have, then we're not going to show you property and vice versa on the seller side. So I, I would suggest that, that they fall under the moving, moving storage and relocation services, that they shall implement best practices and follow CDC guidelines.
I think, I think there was a letter that I sent in for y'all to read that the Ohio, that was sent to the Ohio. And the reality is a lot of folks need money to sell their house and it's, it's, it's another one of those things that we have to do it correctly. But I, I think if we try to say no real estate transactions, other than things that are pending, it's going to cause a lot more harm than good.
Okay, any other opinions on that? Those, those guidelines you talked about, is that like a relatively short written document? That we can, is it something we could refer to, has it been adopted by the National Association of Realtors or something?
I'm not sure, Hutch, I, believe it or not, it's not the area that I focused on before this meeting, but I can certainly get that to us, yeah, I, I can get the
Because what I'd like is, is to be able to actually reference some document, we can, we can append it to our thing, but
I think if we just said right now that they're allowed under NAR real estate best practices for states that have implemented shutter in place or shutdown, then we can add that once we get it, something like that. I mean, I can get it to you by the morning, though.
All right, so I guess Bob heard that, so we'll go ahead and add that back to, add the real estate back in, but with some language with respect to that, those practices and we'll have an easy place where people can find those practices.
Okay, that's my homework.
Michelle?
Do you want to handle that the same way you're handling the construction industry? That you'll allow with certain rules in place and we're going to get feedback on those rules and we'll add subsequent order?
I like that.
Okay, and I did want to relay that the Gainesville Housing Authority is attempting to complete a public housing project to provide housing for dislocated families and their state and federal funding has strict timelines. And that may already be something we have, that fits in one of our essential categories. We'll take a look at that, but I did want to make sure that I relayed that information.
Do they have to get a, a city inspection or are they exempt from city inspection?
I think it's city.
Yeah, is the city still doing inspections?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I'd say that's between them and the city, the, are we talking about Woodland Park?
I'm not sure, project.
Okay, because that thing is, that thing's all tied in pretty much.
Yeah.
All right, what else do you have, Madam Manager?
Okay, so I also have the cities, the issues that the cities have provided me, those that have anyway. So from Mayor Surrancey in Hawthorne, his concern was that we are a regional community and that despite what these things that we're putting in place, that we have people coming in from other counties. We have attempted to notify other counties through our emergency management folks, to their emergency management folks that we've put this in place. The, so that was just a concern that he expressed. And yes, it's Woodland Park, I was just told on the last one. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because that was a concern expressed by the Hawthorne mayor and I'm not sure what we can really do to address the fact that we have people coming in from, from our other communities. For that matter, we have people that are going to those adjacent counties to do things that they're not doing here, so.
Great, well, thank you, thank you, Mayor Surrancey, and next?
Yes, Newberry had some questions, I think we've addressed some of them. One was construction activities, another was pawn shops, and we've addressed both of those. They're also want confirmation that municipality, whether or not municipalities have a role in the enforcement of the order, aside from educating residences and businesses related to the order. We haven't really addressed enforcement, so that was a question from the City of Newberry.
Well, with respect to enforcement, I would think that, do we need to put in there that any municipality can enforce this as well? It's not a line that's in there now, but is that something we need, Madam Attorney or Mr. Attorney?
And I'm not saying that they wanted that responsibility, they were asking that for clarification because the municipalities, they wanted a confirmation municipalities had no role in enforcement.
We, I think, I think we should allow them, I mean, if a city wants to go out there and enforce this stuff, all the better. And that, yeah, I think we should have a specific line that says, and, and any municipality that wishes to enforce this can do so.
Mr. Chair, we do have a provision that allows municipalities to have stricter rules than we have, I believe.
Why don't we put in that, why don't we put in that same paragraph that municipalities have the ability to, the right to enforce this and also can have stricter rules if they want.
By the way, while we're talking, while we're talking about, were you moving on to another subject, Michelle?
Go ahead.
Regarding whether we were providing a grace period before we started enforcing the order and how we were enforcing the order.
Well, yeah, the, the deal with enforcement is, here's the way I see it, is enforcement is basically going to start with education. We're getting reports already, Latoya has a whole long stack of people who called in with people who are not abiding by the order. In my opinion, the first step would be somebody on county staff, codes enforcement, planning somebody, call them up, call the business on the phone and say, are you aware that these are the rules? We're going to get 90% compliance just with a phone call from a, a public official. Second step is if a couple of days later, nothing's changed, give them to me and I'll go visit them. And then the third step would be to actually send a codes enforcement officer who can cite them if, if it really raises that. I'm going to guarantee you that we're going to get 90-plus percent compliance with all this stuff with just a phone call. And, because most people, I've had just nothing but overwhelmingly positive response from businesses about wanting to be part of the solution. And the thing that I tell everybody who's trying to go through this order and figure out ways where the loopholes are so they can still stay in business, those are the people that are part of the problem. And I've talked to the news media to get on the business of shaming those businesses publicly because we all need to be in this together. And those businesses that comply now, it will be remembered later because they, everybody appreciates the fact that they're taking a hit. And that's my feeling about enforcement. The sheriff really doesn't want to be giving tickets or arresting people and I don't want her to be doing that. We don't need, we're not trying to raise revenue and we're not trying to throw people in jail. What, what we're trying to do is get people to stay at home. And so far, the Gainesville Police and the sheriff have done an awesome job in sorting out the few issues that have been brought to their attention.
I'm okay with all of that. Can I just ask one question while we're talking about the municipalities? Can you describe how we're communicating with all of the other elected officials in Alachua County? Are they citizens or do we have a more direct communication length with officials, what are we doing?
Mr. Chair, a couple of things. And I had spoken, I know you received an email from Mayor Surrancey last night and I had spoken to him yesterday afternoon. First of all, we have a municipal liaison for emergency management, that is Gina Peebles. And anytime we, we take actions, we communicate via email. She provides all the information to all the municipalities, all the judiciary, state attorney, public defender courts, as well as to the chamber and all five constitutional officers all get that information in an email. However,
So we have, we have a master list of all elected officials in the county that are getting the, the email communications you're describing?
We, we get, we provide it to the city managers, the email communication, and they need to provide it to their elected officials. Now, we also, after speaking with Mayor Surrancey, and I did agree with his concerns about their input and not being able to get sufficient input pursuant to that method, we have instituted Monday, Wednesday and Friday calls. The Chair and I will be on a call with the city managers and the mayors from each municipality. Those three days a week, we've instituted a Zoom meeting for those every Monday, Wednesday and Friday so that when we complete what's called our multi-agency coordination call, which is when we have several different agencies on the line, we can then relay what's basically being talked about and discussed and the things that we're considering with them and get their feedback. So we have instituted that and that first meeting where they're involved directly will be tomorrow morning. And it will be every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, as long as we're in this circumstance.
Thanks, thanks.
That's great.
Yeah, that, that was my concern too, is that I had heard it's right to have a team.
All right, Madam Turn, Madam Manager, you got anything else?
Yep, I have, all I have left at this point is concerns regard, from the City of Gainesville. There are some that I think we can just deal with when we do the orders about clarifying certain language and timeframes. But among the ones that I think are substantive to bring to your attention, they're asking that any essential business open to the public should require temperature screenings for customers before they permit entry. I, I am concerned about that recommendation. You try to take everybody's temperature walking into Walmart or Publix. If you had a line before, you're going to have a line now. So that, I'm uncomfortable recommending that, but they are requesting it, so I'm bringing that to your attention. I think we've handled some of these issues with, about the construction activity, six-foot social distancing being mandated, not just recommended. I believe Commissioner Cornell already brought that up. They would like to see that queuing does not interfere with other businesses. They are asking a clarification on parks. All parks, are all parks mandated to be closed, including those with fitness trails and other open areas? I don't believe we did that in the unincorporated area.
Absolutely not.
Yeah.
Okay, so Hutch, you're, you're in favor of keeping the boat ramps open and the parks open? I mean, I think it's really important, actually.
No, I totally am. I mean, we want people to be outdoors and
Okay, good, good. It's important for folks to hear.
I think the only ones we're closing is post-springs
Yep.
and the playgrounds associated with any parks, we don't have that many playgrounds.
No problem with that, yeah, no problem with that, good, good. I mean, you had some signage about, you know, just as a reminder, under our current emergency order, please maintain six foot, yeah, I think that's good.
Okay, they are requesting the reconsideration of the, the one to 1,000 square feet occupancy standard to some maximum number based on occupancy load. Let's see. And the only other question, and, and I may, Legal may weigh in on this, but they are asking whether sales of guns and target ranges are considered essential businesses. We have had questions on that issue as well and some letters and comments. issue as well, and some letters and comments on that issue.
Well, I'll speak to that. I was the one who struck it out of the order, and I don't believe that it's in our best interests to, because of the preemptions placed by the legislature, to speak to it at all. And the legislature says it's completely within their purview to do all local regulations of guns, so I don't think we should have it in our order at all. And that's why I struck it out, because then we would be speaking to it. And they're the ones who says we're not supposed to speak to it. So I say, we're not speaking to it. Guns are not mentioned in our order.
And the Walmart is continuing to sell ammunition, and so it's, you're just saying this is a state issue?
Yeah, I didn't put it in the order. No, it's, in my opinion, it's not an essential business, but there's plenty of places where people can find their ammo.
So, Mr. Chair, when, the way the order's written, everything is closed but what we've listed in there. So I think that's where the concern of the City of Gainesville comes from.
Yep, I understand.
Does, excuse me, does the attorney agree that, with Commissioner Hutchinson's legal opinion, that we somehow can speak to this?
Good, Mike.
So, Mr. Chair, we've looked at it from both sides. I'll tell you, we have heard from Florida Carry, and we've heard the City of Gainesville's attorney's opinion. And I think, you know, we don't, we haven't done this before, so it's hard to say exactly whether this is going to fall under a regulation of their business or not. What we have generally said is we are, we are regulating everything except for the ones that we're turning loose, and even the ones that we're saying are essential and they can continue to operate are the ones that have to operate under certain standards. So the, under that theory, we are in fact regulating everything, except for that, except for what we're not, or what we're allowing to continue to operate. Yeah, they have an argument, but calling them an essential service is also, it would be easier for us if you called them essential service for now, or if we granted exceptions to them. But I don't know what will come out.
Heard the manager's comment, if we don't do anything, then we are taking action by default. So if that's what we want to do, then if our intent is to make those things non-essential, then we just remain silent.
You have called everything non-essential except for what you've called essential.
That's, that's my point. So as things stand right now, they're non-essential. Gun ranges are non-essential.
You want to weigh in, Bob? Unmute yourself, Ben.
Mute myself? No, I was unmuted. Under the current ordinance, we can't make a determination that stores sell, only sell, their only inventory is our weapons and ammunition could be an essential business. We can do that under the current ordinance based upon existing law and like. A lot of that has to do with the fact that we are not yet in a total lockdown situation, and the, there are still a lot of people on the streets. I would point out that pawn shops, which we are putting in here, have weapons. So the ability to buy weapons are out there. So it's just, in this particular situation, we can deal with them. Just looking at the facts of each particular case and say, yes, this is essential. I think there's enough room in the current one to do that without listing them as an essential business categorically.
I guess I was asking the opposite. Is it possible to, by our actions, one way or another, actively or by default, say that they are not essential, which is what we're doing right now, correct? By not including them in the list, we're saying they're not essential. Can we do that?
My concern on that at this point in time is we are under a soft stay-at-home order, and it would be difficult to defend saying they aren't essential when we've allowed so many other businesses to be essential. Home Depot, Lowe's, places like that. If we go into a hard lockdown, I think we can do it.
It's why I added it. You know, I don't mind adding it if it helps everybody. Don't complain me.
Well, first of all, are we just talking about shops that sell guns and ammo? Because someone mentioned gun ranges, which I hadn't even entered my mind, but it's going to be hard to make the argument that that's an essential service. And it's a gathering place of some, well, they're shooting, they're not that far apart. So I would distinguish between those two. And I don't, I don't know how many there are in Elatua County.
Mary Helen, go ahead.
Most gun owners already have guns. I mean, you know, most folks that this would, would be concerned about this already own guns. They may want to get ammunition, they can get that from Walmart. But if they, if there are folks that are really frightened and need to go get a gun, they can go to that pawn shop, you know, that's, that we've left open for people to buy and sell and trade there. I don't know. I just feel like that opening the guns to that just means we're, we're, in my case, that I would be supporting more gun sales.
So you...
At a time that's vulnerable.
You believe we should continue to remain silent on the issue, which means they're not exempt?
I would. I would just not address it. How many, have we had that many people weigh in on this?
How about you, John? Do you have an opinion?
I haven't seen anybody. No, I mean, in terms of people from the public.
Right. No, I haven't.
Well, with, with the sale of guns and ammunition, I have no issue, but the, the shooting ranges, I do. I don't see where that's essential. That's like practicing. I don't see where that's essential. But if one wanted the opportunity to buy ammunition or a gun, at least they should have that right. If we're going to allow pawn shops to sell guns, I'm just saying, so.
They're considered recreational, aren't they? You know, the, the shooting ranges, it's something families go to do together to...
I don't know, but I know some are enclosed and some outdoors, so I, I don't know. But I don't see that as an essential business. I don't, so.
All right, so, leave, just be silent on it or put them back in? Cornell wants them in. I want them silent. And it sounds like Mary Helen is fine with silent?
Yes.
I'm okay with silent for the time being.
All right, we'll leave it silent for now, folks. What else you have, Madam Manager? Unmute the manager, please.
That's all I have in the emails that I've received. That doesn't mean I haven't received 20 while I've been sitting here. I've been trying to watch for them. But that's what I have right now. So whenever we get to the end, I'd like to kind of go through the list as I have it to make sure that my notes are correct from your discussions.
All right. And Madam Attorney, are you good?
Yeah, I think so. There were a couple minor things. Bob, do you want to talk about some of your edits, or have they been covered? There's one minor one regarding people who live in Elatua County, but they work in another county. A question came through, and this would not impact them, and we gave that opinion, and we would roll that into the order. Anything else, Bob?
Okay, we dealt with construction, dealt with pawn shops.
Explicitly adding in businesses who conduct their business over the internet?
Right. There's a, in the, there's something that indicates it, but not including businesses that primarily sell or lease furniture. That's an exclusion. That talks about not interacting with the general, that's little, that's a little O in the long list of things. If that's all over the internet, do we really care? Or are you concerned about used furniture going back in the market?
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about that.
So if they, if they do that work over the internet, we're okay with it?
Yes. Bob, when you look on the order on page three, item number six, essential infrastructure, it's going to sadden my good friend Jacques, who really enjoys this sentence, but the last sentence, essential infrastructure shall be construed broadly to avoid any impacts to essential infrastructure broadly defined. I think we can probably just lose that.
How about, shall it be construed broadly?
There you go. I think Jacques will like that, then.
So, Hutch, did we get to 500 on grocery, or 1,000, or what are we doing?
About to get to that. Then we're going to revisit on Friday.
Go check it out for yourselves, everybody, if you can.
And talk to the people, talk to the managers. They're happy to talk to you. And, and try out something other than Publix. Somebody needs to go to Ward, somebody needs to go to Walmart. And, and just let's see how this thing is working.
How is the sheriff, and before we go through the summary, the sheriff and the first responders, the healthcare workers, how, how's everybody doing?
Madam, Madam Manager, you want to talk about the first responders? I mean, we had some guys that went into, guys or gals that went into isolation for a while. They've come back out. The sheriff had 10 that she needed to isolate for a while, and most of them will be out of isolation because of either travel or some sort of other contact.
I saw we're doing additional cleaning on the rescue units and...
Yeah, yeah. And I will say that chance is down to a day of, one day supply of personal protective equipment. I think they got a shipment, but, and I've talked with ER docs in all three hospitals just to get their lay of the land, not the official word from on high. And in all cases, they said things are under control right now. They haven't really sort of surged, but they're gearing up for it. Now, one, one thing that we have talked about that I don't think the whole commission's aware of, is we've talked about the possibility of leasing a motel or a hotel for the purpose of providing a bed and a room for first responders and medical personnel to be able to go to if they believe they've been exposed and don't want to go home. And the reason I think that's important is there are folks who are willing to take a risk with their self. They're not willing to take a risk with their family. And in many other places, in many places, they're sleeping in their cars because they won't go home. And I think...
100% behind that, Hutch. Whatever we have to do on that, 100%.
And right now, the hotel occupancy is 15%. So I'm sure they, somebody's can use the business. Madam Manager, have we had somebody from procurement or whatever looking into and talking with the motels to see if we can find one?
Actually, Mr. Rob, your tourism manager has been doing that.
Okay. So if we need to do that, the other thing is that the mobile testing site, we don't know if it's going to happen or not. We thought it was going to happen this week, but I know that they've looked at the RTS, the old RTS site, and I know they've gone out and looked at the fairgrounds, and we don't know what the Department of Health is doing in that regard, unless the manager has any more recent input than I do. She doesn't...
The overall issue is the availability of both. It's not just test kits, there's also collection kit issues, because there are two different things. So the collection kit is the swab that you put in somebody's nose essentially to collect the sample. There are shortages of collection kits as well as test kits, so they're trying to replenish those. The state does have a plan to provide supplies, including things like masks, to the county. As they start getting those in, they're, they're bringing those out to the counties. And the health department is then in charge of then doling those out to the healthcare providers, such as the hospitals. So they are working on getting those things in as quickly as possible.
And I want to make a point that I think is a good one, and that is, it was brought to me by Commissioner Johnson. I'm just going to go ahead and read it. There are other employees on the front line, and some of those are in grocery stores and pharmacies, and they should be put on the list of folks who get consideration for N95 masks and hand sanitizer and the other things, shoe covers and so forth.
Critical support, yeah.
Critical support services. Exactly. We need, you know, we're calling some of these folks essential services, and they are essential, and we need to be sure that, that really essential ones are protected. So I hope we, when we're stocking up, we, we, we think of them. And of course, grocery stores, they can probably figure out how to get the supplies if they've got a supply chain for them. But I want those grocery store workers in particular, they are beleaguered, and they're doing a great job, and we need to really support them. Anything else, Madam Manager?
Mr. Chair, no, when the board's ready, I'd like to just quickly go over my list and make sure we have it correct.
Okay, you go. And then Bob will be keeping track as well, so go.
Okay, for occupancy restrictions, we will set another meeting for Friday, and we will revisit that with the board for discussion. Pawn shops, pawn shops are in. Real estate, we'll get rules together, and we'll put them back in with those rules, some kind of model rules, is my understanding.
Best practices. We'll get you that.
Best practices, and we'll deal with that on Friday as well. Was that the intent?
Yes. If not, if not earlier, we may be doing this order tomorrow, and then another one on Friday.
Insurance is back in. Moving, storage and relocation services back in. The construction industry is the same as the real estate industry with some kind of best practices that we'll revisit either on Friday or before. The, let's see. We have landscaping back in is okay. Pool service back in is okay. Auto motor dealerships back in is okay for all their services. Actually, most of what they were concerned about was already available under one provision or the other, except for sales, but all of that is now back in. And then churches, did we clarify churches? That was the only other one on my list that I had notes on.
Well, what we've, the current order is saying it's all about recommendations and stuff, because I don't know, whoever was the original drafter of this was concerned about religious liberty and government getting involved. But it basically says 10 people, but it's also saying it's recommended to comply as opposed to requirement. So attorneys, can we say churches, you can put 10 people in there, and that would give them the ability to have their, you know, their preachers and their organist and a few choir members and others to be able to do online? Or do you want to leave it loosey-goosey like this and leave it up to the churches?
At this point, I would rather leave it loosey-goosey, as you say. I know some churches have already gone to, you know, purely Facebook. And the key is we can put in there, I, I, you know, happen to like that. We recommend it. We recommend social distancing, and, and hope the pastors can have this discussion with their flocks. You know, we are still, you know, because of the First Amendment, we're still in a very odd situation in the moment because we're not in a total lockdown.
All right. So why don't we leave the order to read just the way it does, and...
Okay, can I just...
Go ahead, Mike.
I don't know if I'm comfortable with that. I mean, unless we're flat out being told by the attorney's office that we can't do it. I don't want to start distinguishing between social gatherings on the basis of the content of the meetings. That's not the point, I thought. We're trying to get people to not gather in groups unless they have to. So I see no big difference between going to see a movie, going to the hip drum, going to a basketball game, or going to church as far as the potential for spread of the virus. I'm not following the basis for an exception, unless... I'm not following the basis for an exception, unless it's that it's illegal, and I'm not hearing clearly whether it is or not.
Madam Attorney?
So, Mr. Chair, I would prefer to treat every gathering the same way, because I think that the basis is the same, the basis is the same.
That's where I am.
I agree.
So I say, I say tighten up on the goose and put some language in there that matters.
If we, how, I mean, under our, under our order, we're treating social gatherings of ten or more as absolutely prohibited, or are we, what is our language now? Prohibition?
Right now, they, they're discouraged.
Right, so we need to discourage in the same way. I mean, we're not going to treat churches any more strictly than we do any other.
Right, the idea is to have uniform language that applies to everyone, so that would be my-
To call them out separately, honestly. It's any gathering of ten or more is either discouraged or prohibited, whichever.
And I would ask, I would ask for some recommended language for a Friday meeting.
All right, so on Friday, we'll have a new set of language to handle the revision for number sixteen in our order. All right, we'll leave that.
Mr. Chair, I just want to let the board know that this is one of our most popular meetings. We've had approximately 1,455 comments. There are almost 8,000 people watching this meeting, and that does not include the 72 shares, so we can't fit that many people in our commission chambers, so that's definitely the, the most popular, this is the most popular court meeting we've had.
All right, so we don't need to ever go back to the old school commission chambers with this, with this uncomfortable queues. People can sit at home in their, with their quarantini, which is any drink that you drink alone, and they can enjoy watching us make cash.
Can I say one more thing before we sign off? I just want to, for those that are watching, a lot of input from our citizens over the last 24 hours. I know each of us, the phone hasn't stopped ringing, and really, really appreciate the initiatives that people are taking. Again, if we can slow the curve, slow the, the curve from doubling every two and a half days to just four days, it's just a little bit. If we can do that, then our cases exponentially will be less than 20 days. And as I was thinking about my Hurricane Irma chairmanship, Hutch, it was child's play compared to what you've been doing, and so I wanted to give you a personal shout out and thank you.
Yep.
And I did want to say that I can't believe the outpouring of support from folks since we've done this order. There was a lot of concerns, and, I mean, I've been talking to county commissioners all over the state about it, and, and anyway, I think it's, it's a good thing that we're doing here. It's a real sacrifice for some folks, and some folks a lot more than others, and it's really important that we, we stick together on this. So I'm happy that I'm the one who's having to do this right now, and it's, I couldn't think of a better job for a lame duck. So with that, we are adjourned.